All right, we call this meeting to order. I will note that we're going to begin with a closed session and the workshop will begin after the closed session. Madam Clerk, would you please announce the roll?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Present in the School Board chamber are Chair Brown, Vice Chair Weems, Mr. Callen, Mr. Culpepper, Mr. Cummings, Ms. Dwyer, Ms. Felton, Dr. Green, Ms. Melnick, and Ms. Rogers.
Thank you. Mr. Bowen Steele plans to arrive at 4:00 p.m., just for the record. Vice Chair Weems, would you please read us into the closed session?
I move that the School Board recess into closed session in accordance with the exceptions to open meetings law set forth in Code of Virginia 2.2-3711. Part A, Paragraph 1 is amended to deliberate on the following matters. One, discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body. And evaluation of performance of departments or schools of public institutions of higher education where such an evaluation will necessarily involve discussion of the performance of specific individuals. Any teacher shall be permitted to be present during a closed meeting in which there is a discussion or consideration of a disciplinary matter that involves the teacher and some student, and the student involved in the matter is present, provided that the teacher makes a written request to be present to the presiding officer or their appropriate board. Nothing in this subdivision, however, shall be construed to authorize a closed meeting by a local governing body or an elected school board to discuss compensation matters that affect the membership of such body or board collectively, namely to discuss A, Personnel Matters, School Board Attorney's Contract.
Motion made by Vice Chair Weems, seconded by Ms. Melnick. Any discussion? Seeing none, I call for the votes to go into closed session.
So, Madam Chair, we have 10 ayes. The motion did pass to go into closed session.
Thank you. Whereas the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And whereas Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the School Board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be resolved that the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which the certification applies. And only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered. All right, motion made by Ms. Dwyer, seconded by Dr. Green. Any discussion? Seeing none, I call for the votes to certify closed session.
So, Madam Chair, we have 10 ayes. The motion did pass for certification of closed session.
All right, thank you. Vice Chair Weems?
I move that the School Board approve Amendment Number Two to the School Board Attorney's Contract and authorizes legal counsel and the superintendent to take necessary action to finalize the amendment.
Okay, moved by Vice Chair Weems, seconded by Ms. Dwyer. Any discussion? Seeing none, I call for the votes to approve the motion read by Vice Chair Weems.
So, Madam Chair, we have 10 ayes. The motion did pass.
Okay, thank you. All right, we are now on to School Board Administrative Matters and Reports. I have sign-up sheets for December 1 to 1 meetings with superintendent and school visits with the superintendent. I'm going to start these to the right this time. Also, the Superintendent Student Advisory Council is December 4th at Lanstown, 3:15 to 5:00 p.m. Our last Student Advisory Council, Ms. Melnick and Mr. Callen attended, and just wanted to see if two board members that haven't had the opportunity to attend this year would be interested in attending that December 4th Student Advisory. Oh, it was Mr. Bowen Steele, wasn't you?
It was me and Mr. Bowen Steele.
Oh, Mr. Bowen Steele and that was probably my error, not Mr. Callen. Oh, it was? Okay. Okay. Mr. Bowen Steele and Ms. Melnick attended, and so we're looking for two folks that can attend that Student Advisory Council. It is 3:15 to 5:00 p.m. at Lanstown on December 4th. Is that something you'd like to do?
Yes.
Okay, so Ms. Felton is available and then one other board member, and if you're interested, I guess just reach out to me or Dr. Robertson. Mr. Callen is also available. Okay, perfect. Do any other board members have anything to report?
Excuse me, Chair, could you again reiterate the location of this meeting?
Sure, it is December 4th at Lanstown High School from 3:15 to 5:00 p.m. Ms. Melnick?
Just a little late now, but in the calendar, when we do the calendar next year and we discuss the meetings for next year, we might consider not having a meeting on this Tuesday before Thanksgiving if the teachers and the families, if this was their last day of school next year, if we're giving that Wednesday off. It's never been off before, but a little unfair to families who have already started their journeys for the holiday. It's, you know, a lot of information we're being given tonight to discuss, and, you know, people just might not even be able to tune in or participate, so just food for thought for next year.
Okay. Would you like the Policy Review Committee to look at that since that's a bylaw?
I mean, if that's a bylaw, that's fine, but we've also moved meetings sometimes for holidays well in advance. It's not, I don't think it's a bylaw issue. I think it's a, it's let's be fair to the public and we do it, we do it quite a bit, actually. Well, whatever, however it needs to be done, if the teachers are finished on Tuesday, we probably should not have a meeting.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Melnick. Do any other board members have anything to report? Okay, seeing none, we are going to move on to our literacy update, and we welcome Dr. Danielle Calucci, Chief Academic Officer, and Abigail Dodry, Acting Director of Student Services.
Good afternoon, Chairwoman. Brown, Vice Chair Weems, Dr. Robertson, and School Board members. I'm very happy to be here with you to share this literacy update and introduce our Acting Director of Student Support Services, Abigail Dockerty, to you. She is an expert in the state in the area of literacy instruction, and we're very fortunate to have her leadership, and she will do a great job this evening explaining some of the intricacies and nuances to literacy instruction. Since I have come to Virginia Beach and been stationed here with my husband about 12 years ago, I can say one consistent priority of this division is committing to making sure our students receive early intervention in literacy instruction and the most high-quality education, and literacy has been a constant priority, and so we're excited to share some of that this evening. I wanted to begin because I wanted to shed a little bit of light and provide context that literacy instruction is not simple. And so, giving a response, for example, to a parent that asks, is my child reading on grade level? It seems like a simple thing, but if you know literacy instruction, that's a very complex question to be able to answer. Now fortunately, we rely on our standards of learning that the state provides us for grade level expectations in reading, writing, research, and communication, and so we have measures in place to be able to tell a parent if their child is meeting those expectations at the grade level in the area of those areas of literacy. But as Dr. Lewis Moats explains, learning to read is not a natural process for many students, and it involves complex taught skills. And so while it may seem simple, many of us who are not trained in literacy instruction can fall to strategies like, what does that picture? Can you guess the word based on the picture? Or can you guess the next word in the sentence? And those are not scientifically sound reading strategies. And so our teachers are highly trained. As you know, they've completed many modules per the Virginia Literacy Act over the past year, and we have also, for the past five years, been aligning our professional learning for teachers and our curriculum to science-based reading research. Reading development does not unfold naturally by grade. Children's reading skills are distributed across a wide continuum, and assigning a single grade leveler can really oversimplify that complex set of linguistic decoding fluency and comprehension abilities. So VB CPS employs many data points to make sure we are not missing anything with our children's reading skills and their development, to make sure all of our students can access grade-level text, can comprehend across multiple content areas, and access rigorous coursework across the curriculum. And so at this time, I'm going to invite Abigail Dockerty to the podium, and she's going to walk you through many of those data points and how we use them to inform instruction in Virginia Beach.
All right, good afternoon. It's so nice to be here with you all. To the board and the viewing public, if you ever used any of the language that Dr. Calucci shared around looking at the picture and trying to make a guess, know that I did that too, early on in my career, and as we've kind of learned more about how the brain learns to read, when we know better, we do better. So if that has been you, it has been me as well. So this afternoon, I'm going to provide you a brief literacy update. It's our commitment to ensure that you are aware of the work we are supporting around the implementation of the Virginia Literacy Act specifically related to literacy assessment and data. Over the past few years, we have been providing updates related to our compliance to the VLA. We want to take a moment to thank you all for your most recent support approving our current Division Literacy Plan at your November 10th meeting. As you know, the Virginia Literacy Act has brought an increased focus on early literacy and foundational skills as well as evidence-based practices. Tonight, we will focus specifically on literacy assessments and how the data are utilized to support student achievement. As noted by Dr. Calucci, the 2024 English Standards of Learning demonstrate a commitment to raising expectations the 2024 English Standards of Learning demonstrate a commitment to raising expectations and increasing the rigor of instruction to ensure our students are able to meet the demands of the present and future world. These newly adopted standards also reflect the VDOE's commitment to implementing science-based reading research and evidence-based instruction in alignment with the VLA. In Virginia Beach, our instruction is grounded in the Virginia Standards of Learning, which are organized by large strands that are vertically articulated. The standards allow teachers to use an evidence-based approach that starts with a strong foundation, develops in a meaningful progression, and creates an intentional focus on applying skills in rigorous texts and learning experiences. Virginia Beach's teaching and learning framework outlines the foundation for strong instruction. Our Balanced Assessment System provides educators with the necessary information to elevate the teaching and learning framework through assessment data from a variety of sources. This enables them to respond appropriately. You will note that "respond" is what links each part of the wheel together. Educators are constantly responding to student needs by utilizing a variety of data. Today, we will share a few sources of data that provide unique perspectives of our students' understanding, and we will share how the data are used to respond using evidence-based literacy instruction. Displayed on this table are some of the assessments that are utilized to evaluate literacy proficiency and support determining if a student is meeting grade-level expectations. These assessments include screening tools, such as the Virginia Language and Literacy Screening System, or VOWs, that seeks to either identify students who might be at risk of experiencing reading difficulties, or to pinpoint what might be the cause of an identified reading concern. We look at criterion reference assessments, such as the Standards of Learning Tests, which measure student proficiency on grade-level standards, and we look at norm reference tests, like the NWEA MAP, which compares student performance to similar age and grade-level peers across the nation using normed data. This robust assessment system provides multiple data points that comprise a body of evidence that can be used to analyze student literacy achievement. For those of you all that have been with us over the last decade, you have been a part of this literacy journey and truly experienced the shifts in literacy and assessment practices. So we're going to begin with the Standards of Learning, or SOL, assessments, which are criterion reference tests that measure a student's performance based on grade-level expectations. At the September 9th meeting, the Office of Planning, Innovation, and Accountability provided an update on spring SOL data from the 2024-2025 school year, including literacy data. Tonight, we're responding specifically to a request for reading SOL cohort data beginning in third grade. Displayed here in blue are the reading SOL pass rates for the same group of students beginning in their third-grade year, which was 2021, 2022, and then each year after. The most recent data from the 2024-25 school year reflects these students' performance in sixth grade. This specific cohort of students was selected because it represents a group of students beginning in grade three whose assessment conditions were not impacted by the pandemic. In other words, this data demonstrates uninterrupted testing. You will note that while Virginia Beach's pass rate trends mirror that of the state, which is shown in orange, we average about 10 percentage points above the statewide average overall. An additional consideration when reviewing this data is the implementation of the 2024 English SOLs, which began last year in alignment to the Virginia Literacy Act without the typical opportunity for a crosswalk year. This is one of the challenges that our educators navigated last school year with the rollout of the VLA, and the lack of implementation dip speaks to the caliber of their work. Data from the Virginia Standards of Learning Reading Assessment is used by multiple stakeholders for various purposes. This includes teachers in professional learning communities analyzing students' performance by question reports to reflect on instructional practices and identify trends to adjust instruction. Schools use scaled scores as one of the many data points to identify and place students in intervention and support each year. And in accordance with the VLA, literacy leaders, English teachers, and interventionists use students' scaled scores and score ranges to identify students in grades four through eight who are required to be screened with VOWs and have a student reading plan, which outlines goals for their targeted intervention. Administrative and instructional leadership teams use overall pass rates and reporting category pass rates to formulate PCI literacy goals that help drive their work towards continuous improvement. In addition, at the division level, we use trend data to analyze the need for additional instructional supports, updates to the curriculum, to drive the planning of professional learning, and to make program evaluations. Now, we're going to move to examining an assessment option that measures risk and truly supports the foundational skills prioritized in the VLA. Virginia has been a leader in literacy screening for a number of years, and we are fortunate to have had POWs, now VOWs, in place to screen students in K through two to identify potential risks and put interventions in place long before they begin SOL testing at the end of third grade. VOWs is likely relatively familiar to you all now, given that Virginia Beach participated in the earliest pilots of this new assessment tool in the 2021, 2022, and 22, 23 school years. We were also one of the few divisions identified to soft-launch the screener in 23, 24, providing us the opportunity to learn this new assessment tool in advance of its mandated statewide rollout, and also to be a key stakeholder in the feedback loop with the Virginia Literacy Partnerships, which is the Office of UVA that develops and maintains VOWs. Specifically in grades K through two, VOWs functions as a universal screening tool, meaning that all students are assessed for potential risk. The K3 subtests assess the parts of learning to read that the brain must consolidate in order to develop grade-level proficiency. This means that VOWs is evaluating the individual skills that are the foundation of reading comprehension, also known as the foundational literacy skills. Students are placed in a band of risk based on their VOWs scaled score. It is important to note that while students in K through two are universally screened, only students who scored in the high band of risk in the spring of their second-grade year, or those who are new to Virginia, are required to take VOWs in the fall of third grade. This will be key as I provide you an update on the fall 2025 K through three VOWs data. Displayed now are the results of K2 VOWs data for this fall. I'll pause to give you a moment to review. So the orange section of each bar represents students in the high band of risk who require a student reading plan and Erie, or Early Intervention Reading Initiative Services. I'll elaborate further on how this data is used to support student literacy achievement after I review grade-three data as well as four through eight VOWs. As previously noted, not all third-grade students are screened in the fall. Only students who are in the high band of risk in the spring of second grade, or those new to Virginia, are screened. However, we recognize that many schools do elect to screen additional students to gather data to inform instruction. So you will notice that in the bar graph on the left-hand side of the screen, that total N is much smaller than you just saw in the bar graphs for grades K through two. Of the selected students screened in third grade, just under 1,000, or approximately 53%, were high-risk. The bar on the right-hand side of the screen shows that same group of high-risk students who, when compared to all third graders, represent 21% of the total third-grade population. So when put in context to the entire grade level, this number is actually the same as the percentage of students in the high band of risk in second grade. New for this year is VOWs four through eight. This assessment was added as a statewide part of the implementation of the Virginia Literacy Act. It is important to note that while this assessment includes the word "screening" in the title, I'm sorry, this, yes, it includes the word "screening" in the title of the assessment, this tool is not utilized universally. So unlike VOWs K2, this screening tool begins by examining the whole of reading comprehension, and it's assuming that these discrete skills are already consolidated in a proficient reader. So this means that if a student is not demonstrating proficiency with reading comprehension on their reading SOL, the prerequisite skills, such as fluency, spelling, word reading, et cetera, need to be further examined to determine specific areas of underlying need. So this is different from K3. Only students in 4-8 who failed their spring reading SOL, or those who passed with a read aloud or audio accommodation, are required to be screened with VOWs four through eight. This assessment then provides a deeper dive into a student's reading skills, examining the subskills that are required to be proficient. Also, unlike VOWs K through three, the 4-8 assessment does not provide an overall band of risk, but instead, it gives us mastery-level score ranges, which are utilized to inform student reading plans, student literacy goals, and appropriate intervention placement. VOWs screening data is used to inform student reading plans in grades K through eight. In K through three, student reading plans are created for students who score in the high band of risk, and in 4 through 8, students who score in the basic or below-basic range on the spring reading SOL receive a plan. Reading goals are created based on VOWs subtest data, and aligned intervention is provided based on need. Ongoing progress monitoring is used to measure student progress and inform instructional decisions. The expansion of VOWs to grades 4 through 8 further increases that vertical articulation between primary and intermediate elementary grades, as well as into middle school, really providing teachers with both current and historical data that can be used to fine-tune instruction to support any identified gaps. To date, we have 8,160 students being supported by a reading plan. The implementation of VOWs K3 and the expansion to 4-8 has truly been a collaborative effort. Building leaders, literacy leaders, classroom teachers, and multiple offices across teaching and learning, as well as school leadership, have worked together over the past two years to support the rollout of VOWs and student reading plans. The collaborative aspect of this work also extends to families through the communication shared related to VOWs screening, as well as the input that sought for student reading plans. This prong of our balanced assessment model continues to positively impact student literacy growth. The final division-wide literacy assessment tool that we're going to examine tonight, which is used to measure and support student achievement, is the NWEA MAP. MAP data provides a norm-referenced data point that compares student progress to others across the nation. At the division level, the data is used to evaluate overall trends, identify areas of strength and need, determine programmatic changes that may be needed in curriculum or intervention, and to guide resource allocation. At the school and student levels, it helps educators set goals, differentiate instruction, and monitor progress. Data at the student level can be used in unison with other information, such as classroom observations, formative assessment, VOWs, and SOL data, to truly develop a comprehensive view of an individual student's level of literacy performance. This data is used to identify instructional indicators to support in planning for intervention and enrichment or extension. As a norm-referenced assessment, the NWEA MAP achievement data represents students' current levels of academic performance measured against national norms. During the DETL update in October, MAP Math data was shared. Tonight, or this afternoon, I guess, you will receive a reading update. I'll pause for a moment so that you can review. This data displays the number of students assessed in each grade level, the median percentile rank for the grade level, and the achievement bands broken down by percent in each quantile. You will note, if you're following down the FAR column on the left, that the number of students assessed in grades nine and 10 are smaller than the other grades. This is due to four-by-four scheduling for English classes in grade nine and the limited use of the assessment for intervention-placed student purposes only in grade 10. So I recognize that this table contains a great deal of numerical data, so I want to particularly highlight the fact that in grades three through nine, where all students are assessed, the median performance in Virginia Beach exceeds the 60th percentile in all grade levels. I hope that this literacy update illustrates the major tools that our dedicated teachers, teacher assistants, tutors, coaches, and administrators utilize to inform instructional decisions and monitor student literacy achievement. We use a balanced assessment model with varied data points, and due to that complexity of reading that Dr. Calucci spoke to, we looked at our readers' progress from multiple angles. Leveraging these key measures of achievement truly helped us to identify and address student-specific instructional needs. We thank you for your attention, and we stand by ready to answer what questions you may have.
Thank you. Ms. Rogers?
Thank you so much for your presentation. I had a question about MAPS testing. How long does it take to administer the MAPS testing each time it's administered, and how many times throughout the year do we administer that?
I'm going to defer to my executive director here. Hello. We administer it in grades three through 10 three times a year. In second grade, it's two times a year, and students' range, it can take anywhere from 30 minutes to about an hour. That's the average.
Okay. And do you do that on an individual or a group basis?
The school gives it as a group.
Okay. And the reason I'm asking is because I was part of the pilot as a pre-K teacher for our VOWs testing.
Oh, okay.
And so I understand how long that takes each educator. You have to, and this is for my colleagues and for the public, you have to, every educator has to test each child individually, and there's a three-week window, three times a year, to do this, which is nine weeks of testing. Then you're adding MAPS testing on top of that, and while all of this is good data, I do have a concern, and I understand this is also at the state level, that are we over-testing our students to get these data points? How much time do we spend testing, and which then diminishes our ability to then instruct? And so that is one thing that I have had my eye on for quite some time, and not that this is something that you guys can do anything about, but that perhaps our legislation could do something about, is how much time it takes our educators to administer these tests for our students to get the data, which is critical for our literacy, but it also diminishes their ability to then teach the students who need it. And so we need to find a better balance, because the MAPS testing is important, the VOWs testing is important, but people don't understand it is nine weeks just for the VOWs testing, and that is instructional time that our students don't get. And so I just wanted to make that point.
And Mrs. Rogers, we monitor that and agree. We do not want to over-assess our students. Both of these assessments are required. So you spoke to the importance of monitoring that at the state level. VOWs is state-mandated, and we are utilizing the legislation that allowed us to use NWEA MAP as a replacement, or an alternative, I should say, to the Virginia Growth Assessment, the VGAs that we used to administer. And so that is state-mandated as well. And so we are monitoring that, and we'll continue to monitor the legislation that may be written in the future.
Yeah, I'm hoping that...
Thank you for your comments.
Yeah, I'm hoping we can lessen that, to give our educators more time to actually spend with our students that need the help. It's great to have the data, but then if they don't have the time, it's kind of like a juxtaposition. So, thank you.
Ms. Melnick?
Okay, so it begins with VOWs testing, correct? In cases of need, that creates a reading plan, you said? Okay. So a student starts the school year with that plan, and then all of a sudden it clicks, and their reading has improved exponentially. Are they required to stay in the program for the full school year, or can they test out?
So there's kind of two embedded questions within that. The VDOE and the VLA have directed us that the student reading plan is an annual plan. So students are qualified for a student reading plan K3 based on that high band of risk in the fall.
Okay.
If that mid-year, the grade instruction that we're providing moves them out of that high band of risk, they're still required to have a student reading plan. We can adjust the goals within that plan based on what the data is now showing that student might need.
Okay.
So that's the plan piece. The intervention piece, if the student has moved out of the high band of risk into moderate or low, we have flexibility in terms of the support that we're providing them in intervention.
Okay. I asked, I had a child who went for POWs testing in kindergarten, and he was very shy, and he would not talk to the testing, the tester, and she just said he wrote an X for everything. It sounds like he can read, but he had to stay for a full year because he wouldn't talk to the teacher, so...
And that's the difference between POWs and VOWs.
Okay, okay. So that's the difference.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect.
Yep.
Okay, okay, so that's the difference. Okay, perfect. All right, yeah, thank you.
Mr. Cummings?
Yeah, thank you so much for sharing. And I'm asking you to go back a step and just re-explain one thing to me, which is you touched on, which was the end values on slide 10. You know, when I was looking at this deck ahead of time, I was like, trying to figure out why there's two grade threes, if one was Virginia Beach, if one was a state. But just from my own sense, I know you jumped into it, just walk me through who's, walk me through that slide one more time.
Yes, so third grade is going to be our most inconsistent of the K three band of testers that we have. Because the only students that are required to be tested in third grade are those that in the spring of second grade were in the high band of risk. So matriculated to third, now we have to test them. Or are new to Virginia and don't have existing vowels data. And so we're required to screen them to get the requisite data that we might need to support them. And so what you'll notice then is that the number is much smaller for the total number of students screened. And in fact, it's more students than we're even required to screen because what we find in our schools is that this data is valuable to inform instruction, regardless of whether or not we anticipate a student being on a reading plan. There's lots of great data that teachers can use to determine what needs need to be met in the classroom. And so schools will elect to screen additional students outside of the requirement. And so that first bar is of the third graders that were screened, where they fell in the bands of risk. And then the bar to the right puts them in the context of the entire third grade population. And so that kind of teal piece at the bottom would be the rest of the kids. They weren't screened, and so they don't have a band of risk, but they comprise the bulk of third grade.
Cool, that's what I thought I heard you say. I just wanted to make sure because that was going to be one of my questions going into this ahead of time as I was looking at the deck. And then I have a couple more quick questions. You know, I saw in here about interventions, and I would love just to hear a little bit more. You know, we don't have to go in super in-depth, but just walk me through, say, and you could pick a grade, maybe grade two, I don't know. You're in second grade, and you're in the high-risk category. What do those targeted interventions look like for that, for that kid?
What we do is we follow as Abby, Mr. Doggerdy said, we have Erie Intervention. So because of the Erie Intervention, those second graders that are high-risk have to have 2.5 hours of intervention per week. So that's about thirty minutes a day. And you are aware that we have to use approved resources from the Virginia Literacy Act on the state list. And here in Virginia Beach, we actually implement SIPS. It's a specific program. So we have our early literacy tutors that go into buildings at the elementary K three level, and they would work with that second-grade student based on the data that they have from the vowels intervention, from collaboration with the classroom teacher and the reading specialist in the building. And they utilize that core, that program for the core instruction, and then make the necessary instructional decisions based on the student reading plan that the student has, and making sure that they're monitoring their progress and growing.
Cool, thanks so much for sharing. I was really curious to hear a little bit more. And then my final question is about the NWEA MAP. And I'm just trying to make sense of like, what's good, what's not so great in terms of, because I know it's new and whatnot. And so, you know, if I look at the sixty-first through eightieth bucket, and the, I'm just going to say the green bucket and blue bucket, and add those two together, you know, that equals, what, fifty? And so I'm trying to understand, like, is median really, is that what we should be looking at when we're trying to benchmark? Or, I don't know, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to understand what I'm looking at. Because we don't probably have state benchmarks or anything like that since it's new. But what's good and, you know, what's bad? And how do we feel about this assessment with what we're looking at here of the green and the blue?
Well, we wouldn't say good or bad.
Okay.
What we would say is it is another point of data that we're using. And one thing that we really appreciate about this, as Ms. Doggerdy said earlier, is that it is a norm reference test. So this is one point that really gives us a broader picture. Because here in Virginia, we follow the standards of learning. So all of our tests are geared towards that. This is a norm reference test. It really gives us a different glimpse of our students. Instead of just comparing across Virginia, this gives us a look across the United States. And so you know other NAEP assessments and things that we also look at. So this gives us a different picture of us compared to a different set of students. So yes, for us, we are not a common core state, we're a standards of learning state. When we look at this data, we're very happy that we are in the medium of sixty or above for third through ninth grade. And the way we're looking at it is we're going to be continuing to explore and examine this data. This was our first year of implementation last year. We're going to continue to look at this as a point of reference. And we continue to utilize it to determine what are the overall trends we're seeing? How are we able to take this data at the individual student level and continue to utilize it as one point to support instruction as we go forward?
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Yeah, just the things I was looking at and thinking about. And I just jumped back to slide number six when we look at our SOL assessments and comparing to the state. And so I know that a lot of good work is being done within our schools, specifically, you know, the results of our interventions. And you know, those things where we have folks spending thirty minutes a day with kids who need it. And, you know, that has a measurable impact. So that was fun to hear about, and thank you so much for all your great work with it.
Ms. Fulton?
Thank you, Chair Brown. And thank you for this detailed data that you've given us so far. And standing right there on slide 10, my interest is, and I like the explanation you made, you see, you're exploring and examining data to help improve our students. So I would like to know, if you have the data in front of you, and oh, we could get it, what are the demographics for the, for all students or partial student for both bar? What are demographics? What is the gender? What is the ESO students for this particular data?
I'm glad that you asked that question. I don't have it in front of me, but I do want to note that we can provide that to you. But most importantly, we have DOSL here, and at every one of our school support team meetings, I do want you to know the schools have that data in front of them and utilize that data. So while we don't have it as part of the presentation this evening, please know that it is an important part of what schools look at and what they're using to drive their decision-making in their buildings. But we can work to get that for you.
Yeah, and for, you know, for all that you're doing, this is a crucial time for our students, especially when I see the SOL scores as well. It is important that we know where we are. And I love, I like what you said, exploring and examining data to make sure that all of our students are covered. I would like to have that information. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So to me, and I appreciate everything you guys presented, and it's great to know that we're on a good path. And reading is one of those things that's super important to me. And so, you know, like I said before, until every student is able to, you know, be reading on grade level. And I know that you mentioned that there's some complexities and exactly what that means and pinpointing that. But we're still going to have work to do, and, you know. I wanted to speak a little bit before I ask my questions to the PALS versus the vowels. And I know that there was some question about, you know, are we overtesting and the time? And, you know, I understand those concerns certainly. But I have a first grader, and I also have a senior in high school. So my senior in high school, I believe, was assessed with PALS. And he was at risk when he was younger. And so, you know, the system in place, I wouldn't say that it didn't work. I don't know, I haven't reviewed the data back that far here to see, you know, what the difference is between this system and the last system. But what I will say as a parent, my understanding of the data and where my child is at is much, much greater with what's coming home in this new system with my daughter. With the bands of risk, it's just much easier for me to understand. I'm getting that feedback. And so I really, as a parent, I do tend to like it better personally. And, you know, other people have communicated that to me as well, that they like that a little bit better. My question is, my first one, is, you know, you spoke a little bit about the repeat reading plan and annual plan and the support intervention. Can you talk a little bit more about what those types of interventions look like? So, you know, we have a high band of, high risk, and we have a moderate risk. So what would that intervention look like for somebody that's high risk? And what will we be doing for a student that's also moderate, at moderate risk?
We actually provide support to all of our learners, even the students that are in the low band of risk. That's the core of our differentiation here in Virginia Beach, the public schools. So you're looking at an increase maybe of the amount of time that a teacher might spend with a student in that moderate band. The data drives everything. So we use the data from the assessment to remediate or try to accelerate students who are not where we would consider proficient. But we also use it to extend our learners. So the intervention is an important part of it, and teachers use programs and resources from the list. Here in Virginia Beach, we have very specific ones that you guys have approved on our Division Literacy Plan. Teachers and coaches have received professional learning, and those are the resources that are utilized to help with that supplemental intervention instruction. But I also don't want to miss that part about the students in low band of risk, too. They still do get additional support to ensure that all of our students are progressing forward, no matter where they fall in that band of risk. Is that a little bit better?
Yeah, and I appreciate that. I was just, I guess, kind of curious specifically what types of interventions. And I appreciate that we're challenging every student where they're at to just get that little bit of extra growth. So that's really great information. Thank you. Vice Chair Wiens?
Yes, I think it's slide seven with the, with the blue and red and orange, all that, yeah. So with tenth grade, obviously, we're testing just very few people. But why do you think that we're at the twenty-eighth percentile?
Because we are only utilizing this assessment for placement within a specific intervention program. So the students that are taking the test at tenth grade have already been identified as at risk, which is why they're receiving this specific intervention. So it's only used for placement within that program. We're not testing additional kids that would be all across the spectrum in terms of proficiency.
And this is, this is compared, is this a national, you said?
Yes.
So are other places doing the same thing? That we're doing only testing, like for the tenth grade? You know, the high, you have no idea?
It would just depend on their program. So one of the programs that this assessment feeds into is Read Run Eighty and Code. And that informs the Read One Eighty teacher on the explicit instruction that they need to provide. And so they use the skills and the reports that come out of this to design their instruction, their direct instruction, small group instruction, one-on-one instruction. And then that also informs the digital practice component that goes right on their level through the data that feeds from that assessment that gives them explicit practice. And so they rotate from the teacher to that in several ways. And so that's why you see only a few tenth graders that really need that course to remediate are being assessed.
Well, I was in one of our middle schools yesterday, and I got to chat with the reading specialist, and she was so excited about this, and the things that she's doing, just the extra things that she's doing. Well, I mean, can I say what middle school it is? Independence Middle Eagles. And she's just, I mean, she just shared with me all these extra things and incentives that she's using with the students, and the students are fully engaged, and she was just so excited. And so just thank you for all this.
That's amazing feedback. Thank you for sharing that.
Yeah, she was, she was just dynamic yesterday, so thank you.
That group has worked extremely hard this year.
Ms. Melnick?
So before I ask my question, I want to say I really appreciated the beginning part of, of this presentation where you really talked about the science of reading, because it really is, it really is a science. And we really have evolved. I taught first grade, and when you mentioned the picture, I was like, well, we were taught to do that. Like, what do you think it is, right? So, so thank you for saying that. But back to slide five. When you started talking about assessment types, the first one is the screening assessments. And you said this is first used to identify students who are, who are experienced or are at risk. But then you also said, or what is the cause? And so is that when you try to start figuring out what might be going on? But how long might that take?
So vowels is interesting in that it's called a screening assessment, and at the same time, it does provide some diagnostic information to help us know what the entry point is for that student. So if you're looking at the following slides that lists the subtests that either K three or four eight assesses, vowels is going to give us indicators to say this is an area of concern. Sometimes that's enough. Sometimes our educators or our reading specialists need a little bit more diagnostic information. And so I might give a quick additional ten spelling words to be like, oh, she really needs to work more on these vowel teams, right? Vowel teams is large. Vowels might say, I need help in vowel teams. I can give you ten more words and very quickly know where I need to start instruction. And so we kind of, screening in many instances can lead directly to instruction. There are cases where sometimes we have to do a quick additional diagnostic.
Yeah, that's so important, and I'm glad you mentioned all of that because, again, that's the science. Whereas in years past, we might have thought it was developmental or whatever, or... Yeah, that, I'm so glad I went back to this. Thank you for that explanation. Thanks.
Trying to leave less to guess her.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. I appreciate all of your work. We will now have an AI update, and we welcome Dr. Ryan Goldberg, Director of Instructional Technology.
Good afternoon, Chairwoman Brown, Vice Chair Wiens, Dr. Robertson, and School Board members. My name is Ryan Goldberg, and I serve as our Division's Director of Instructional Technology with the Department of Teaching and Learning. Joining me this afternoon are also my instructional technology coordinators. Today, I will provide a brief update to you on our journey with artificial intelligence, AI, for the start of the 2025-2026 school year. This quarterly update is a result of a request at the School Board Retreat. On August 11th, School Board members received a follow-up memo on AI covering government, excuse me, covering government requirements, our VBCPS AI integration plan, and a progress timeline. All high school instructional staff completed a required ninety-minute AI session over the summer with additional training available at DETALCon and online. During Teacher In-service Week, staff engaged in professional learning on digital literacy, internet safety, and AI. High school students received technology responsibilities and an AI introduction during the first two weeks of school. In partnership with DOSL and DETAL, staff across all levels will participate in three one-hour AI professional learning sessions. Elementary and middle school session number one was delivered on September 29th. Session number two will be on January 27th. And session number three will be by April 3rd. High school sessions number one and number two were completed before November 5th. Session number three will be delivered by January 27th. These sessions aim to strengthen AI knowledge, confidence, and awareness of safety and ethics. High school students had the ability to begin engaging with generative AI on November 5th. The direction that we have continued to provide our teachers and staff is that this AI implementation year is a year of guided practice, and students should only engage under their supervision for specific purposes. Implementation of AI is optional at the teacher's selected pace. While implementation of AI is optional, the professional learning is not optional. The message that has been shared with administrators, instructional specialists, and teachers is that any AI use with students should be selective and intentional. It is not recommended for integration into every lesson, and we are not encouraging AI use at a high rate this year. We also recommend that teachers work with their instructional technology coach and/or library media specialist as another layer of support from experts in the building. Our focus continues to be sound instruction, academic- Our focus continues to be sound instruction, academic standards, and selective and thoughtful use of technology, including AI. Our team is developing three professional learning sessions per level to provide high-quality teacher development. These are first shared with principals for feedback, then delivered to instructional technology and library media specialists who have trained the teachers. The first session introduced teachers to current VB CPS AI guidelines and expectations, emphasizing ethical and purposeful AI integration. Teachers learn to assess student AI usage, distinguishing from AI-resistant experiences, which discourage usage, from AI-assisted experiences, which use AI as a supportive tool. The session also covered best instructional practices for each approach and strategies to ensure student disclosure when using AI. Overall, it established a foundation for responsible AI usage. This slide shows a summary of the second high school professional learning session, which focused on deepening teachers' understanding of AI as both a pedagogical tool and an ethical responsibility. We want to ensure that teachers understand how to use AI thoughtfully and responsibly to enhance teaching and learning. Teachers engaged in four learning activities: verifying AI-generated responses, employing lateral reading to assess for accuracy, identifying bias in AI outputs, and applying the ABCs of ethical use. The ABCs of ethical use include discussions around, is this accurate? Is it biased, too narrow in scope, or one-sided? And is the AI output a clear response to the prompt it was given? The image on the screen is a one-pager that was also provided to high school teachers. You also have a copy in your packet this afternoon. These practices underscore our commitment to fostering ethical awareness, critical thinking, and responsible AI engagement across our learning community. We have also provided one professional learning to both elementary and middle school teachers. For this school year, elementary and middle school students will not engage with generative AI, with the exception of student use of Adobe Express, School AI, and Notebook LM outputs. This session focused on an introduction to AI and AI literacy, emphasizing responsible use that is aligned to our guidelines. Teachers explored the benefits and risks of using AI, focusing on how it can enhance their personal efficiency and support inclusion. The learning session highlighted practical applications for educators, recommended tools, and effective prompting strategies. The session concluded with scenario-based activities across the core content areas and a few specialty areas that provided teachers with examples of how they may use AI to support in the classroom. Elementary and middle school teachers will have two additional professional learning sessions this school year. In these trainings, we provided ITSSs and administrators with sample activities to help model and guide high school teachers. This slide shows a sample lesson that is AI-assisted that was modeled during the professional learning for teachers. I will give you a moment to review the example. This particular activity aims to strengthen students' reasoning by having them defend their claims. Students will first independently draft a persuasive argument and teachers will review. Then, students will prompt Gemini to provide counterarguments and then use Gemini's output to revise their work to address and refute the AI challenges, ultimately building a more robust position. This activity is at a Level 1 on the AI usage scale, meaning the teacher is giving explicit guidance on when and how to use the AI. The teacher is also monitoring student usage of AI during the entire activity. Now that we've reviewed the professional learning provided to teachers, we will transition to parent communication, information, and guardrails. VB CPS remains committed to forward-facing communication efforts, including increasing awareness and knowledge for our community. In alignment with our commitment to transparency, digital literacy, and innovation, our team has developed resources to help staff, students, and families understand AI's role in education. Current communication emphasizes AI literacy, responsible use aligned with Division guidelines, and the potential to use AI to enhance efficiency, creativity, and instructional support. Recent initiatives include the launch of the Digital Literacy webpage focused on AI. This site was developed in partnership with Department of Teaching and Learning, Department of Technology, Family and Community Engagement, and several parent stakeholders. The webpage serves as a guide for parents with frequently asked questions, resources, policies, and guidance, and a parent-friendly version of the student usage document. This usage document is on the screen and also provided to you with tonight's papers. The site also highlights our guardrails for home and school. Now, for a brief moment, we will show you the Digital Literacy webpage. So, this is the homepage that you'll come to. And if you scroll down, you'll see that there's several tabs that will take you to different landing pages, including what is artificial intelligence, how will it be used? We're going to focus on, for tonight, the FAQs. So, you would click on the frequently asked questions if you were a parent and then scroll down and open certain tabs of questions. These are sample questions that we received when we had one of our parent stakeholder meetings of questions they were inquiring about. Thank you. This slide shows a document that parents also have found helpful and is also included on the AI informational site. From the beginning, guardrails around AI and prioritizing student safety have been of the utmost importance. We continue to partner across several different departments, including the Department of Technology and Family and Community Engagement, to ensure alignment and that this remains a priority. The slide highlights an image from the website, including what the school does and how families can partner with us. Please take a moment to review the slide. Now, I will highlight a few of the guardrails. High school students only have access to approved AI tools and Google Gemini during their instructional day. During the school day, students are provided clear expectations on student usage of AI and are closely monitored by teachers through securely. The use of Gemini on a task is teacher-directed and by assignment only. Teachers also have access to Block Gemini using securely. Google Gemini is turned off on school devices from 3:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. to prevent unsupervised use on class assignments. As the School Division continues its intentional approach to integrating AI, the following next steps are planned. We will complete elementary and middle school professional learning 2 and 3, along with high school session 3, to further develop staff capacity and the effective and responsible use of AI. The focus of these sessions is driven by feedback from teachers, staff, and administrators on their needs aligned to the digital literacy and AI. We will continue to gather feedback from stakeholders, including parents, to inform a measured and sustainable rollout of AI practices across schools. For example, we plan to maintain ongoing outreach to parents through PTA meetings across all three levels to ensure transparent communication and methods to receive feedback. Our front-facing digital literacy page on the VB School site will continue to be updated with AI information to support families and community members. We have collaborated with our professional growth and innovation team to create an AI training for central office and support staff. We also plan to have a webinar with frequently asked questions for the community. Our team plans to return to the School Board for another update in the third quarter. Thank you for allowing us to join you this afternoon for the quarterly update. We are ready for any questions you may have at this time.
Ms. Melnick?
Thank you. While I don't have a question, I just wanted to highlight a few important things that I heard. So, the first is high schoolers have limited access. It turns off at 3 o'clock and doesn't turn back on until 7:00 a.m. I really love that. That's really important. I also love the guardrail that you have listed, which is promoting honesty and putting that onus really on the parents to have that conversation with their kids, as tempting as it may be. Really talk about the consequences of just relying on AI and just really honestly how dangerous that could be. The other is the sample lesson that you gave. So, this was really a great lesson and I really love, I love this because I really think it strengthens the writing process, that it really teaches kids that writing process. Writing a well-written, whatever it is, essay, term, whatever it is, but really putting a bow on it. And that's what I see here with AI giving the feedback. And so, I really appreciate the concentration on those and thank you. And you look so young.
Oh, thank you.
From here, maybe it's without glasses. I was like, I said to Dr. Green, she's like, she looks like she's 16, but thank you.
Yes, can't say that's the first time I've heard that, but thank you. We are, that's what my mom tells me too, actually. But in regards to the example, we are really appreciative of the team and actually our partnership with Department of Teaching and Learning and all the coordinators because all coordinators had a hand in helping developing these lessons to provide to teachers as sample activities.
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
And kids need to know the importance of doing their own work and being their own person. And not only, kids are smart enough not to rely on AI, as tempting as it might be.
Thank you.
Ms. Rogers?
Thank you so much for your presentation. I am certainly one of the people during the workshop this past summer that was highly concerned about AI. So, what I would like to hear more about is the feedback and the data that you guys will be collecting from each school to help guide the division on the AI implementation. It's really important to me that we have a lot of feedback and a lot of understanding of what's happening at each school. I know that there's a lot of side-based decision-making, but we do need to have full understanding of how this is being implemented, what is working, what is not working. So, can you give me more information on the feedback process?
Yes, so we have, at the end of every turnkey, what we've done is taken a step back, actually. We have taken all of the turnkeys and we present them to principals first, high school principals, elementary and middle. High school principals, for the majority, have given us feedback on the turnkey. We then take that and we revise based on the needs. After the turnkey, all teachers have the opportunity to provide feedback from the turnkey or the professional learning on a Google form. My team then analyzes that Google form and we use that to drive the steps moving forward. So, as an example, we are currently planning for the professional learning number three for high school. And a lot of the feedback said that they want more time for examples and more time to dive into the work. So, we're continuing our slow progress and basing the professional learning number three on that feedback from teachers. In regards to parents, if I might add that part, we will, starting after this, moving into the, after the holidays, we will plan on going to PTA meetings and talking to parents as getting feedback on how they see it from a parent perspective.
Do you guys have a plan on continuing the conversation with teachers after it's been introduced to students? Because that, I think, is more of a critical area where we can plan all the things as many different layers as we possibly can and students throw a monkey wrench into our plans and figure out a million different ways on how to circumvent some of our best guardrail decision-making. So, that's where I'm kind of wondering, what is our plan for once it's opened up to students? How will we then get that feedback into what's working, what's not?
Yes, so it opened up for students on November 5th. So, when we have that professional learning number three, we will get additional feedback from teachers then, which that's delivered by January 27th. After that, we do plan on offering some, that would be the end of their required training. We do plan on offering some optional trainings if the teachers are interested around different areas. We do certainly and will use our instructional technology specialists and our library media specialists to provide us feedback in the classroom, from the classroom.
And that, I think, like I said, is the most important to me because, again, best-laid plans don't always go as we thought. So, I just want to make sure that whatever our students are doing, are not doing, or are overly doing, that we have a full idea of what they're doing with AI. Again, this is, it's test ground and so I just want us to be extra careful.
Yes, I agree.
Ms. Felton?
Thank you. Just a statement, I appreciate this detailed presentation that you've given us, but I like what you said in the beginning. You said selective and intentional, not to be in every class or subject. I do appreciate that as well. Writing, and good writing is essential. When I was at ODU, when students were coming in from the school, they were so concerned because they had to build a community because our students could not write appropriately like they wanted to coming from high school. So, this is going to be a good thing. It's great to know because when I get a text from some of my children using SMH, IDK, ETA, I said, no way. What does this mean? Yes, I said, I went to school, I learned, I went, it was intentional for me to learn how to write and write properly. I am not going to accept SMH and ID all of them, not. So, they know not to write me like that. They say, ah, and they tell me what I mean, yeah, and they'll write back to me properly. But I do appreciate the extent that you're going. We were in at the Virginia School Board Association this week and it was very informative. And they showed several, several AI components that they could use for writing. But I'm glad we're sticking with this and just keeping it in-house because too much at one time can be too great of a temptation. Thank you so much for your presentation.
You're welcome.
Dr. Green?
Thank you and thank you for your presentation. I'm glad to hear that you will be engaging the community through PTAs. Do you have a plan yet or will it be announced later on? How, we have 86 schools, so I know reasonably, can't expect you to make all of them. So, are you going to do the meetings in clusters or are you targeting certain schools first?
I think those are great suggestions. We have not decided that exact aspect yet, but certainly we will make sure we get a good amount of schools in different areas, yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Melnick?
And I think it bears repeating for the public that Virginia Beach City Public Schools is not trying to be the first horse out of the gate on this. Like, this is state and federally mandated. And I think that you're doing a good job with just being cognizant of where all of this can go and really taking control of this.
Thank you.
Mr. Culpepper?
I just wanted to catch you before you hit yours. I was hesitant to ask this question, but I'm going to ask it anyway. I really did like your slide. Ms. Melnick pointed this out too, and I just wanted to emphasize it. I liked your slide about guardrails. I think that's actually more developed than I would have imagined at this point. I really like it. But I wanted to add that I assume you're already thinking it's going to be an iterative process and that those will change and develop as we see how this uses, right?
Yes.
The thing that goes along with that, and this is the part I was hesitant to ask in public at this stage, is have you at least considered, you don't need to tell me what it is, but have you at least considered what enforcement mechanisms might look like? Because inevitably, I think that's going to be necessary.
Enforcement?
Yeah.
I think if we had to have some conversation on enforcement, that would be in partnership with Dr. Robertson, Department of School Leadership, Department of Student Leadership, and have conversations there. I will tell you, in the short timeframe since November 5th, to my knowledge, I have not heard anything about inappropriate use. Not that it's not coming, we would acknowledge that, I'm sure it's coming and may be happening. We just have not heard any scenarios, but certainly we would work together as a team to address that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Culpepper, I can add, we did adjust our acceptable use policy to address expectations around this, which signals and tags to our student code of conduct for any student who violates it.
Okay, and which actually highlights in a way the right column of your guardrails. I mean, involving family in that, I think, is key too, keeping us from ever having to worry about that problem. I mean, like I said, it's inevitable, but the more it's minimized, obviously, the better.
And Mr. Culpepper, I would add to that. This is also, I think, increased prevention of unethical use because we're training in AI-resistant. So, English teachers already with Google in the past could, you know, they could craft things on Google. They have the control to turn it off in the classroom or social studies, whoever's writing a response to literature or developing an essay. And so, they're having to do some of that on paper, pencil. And so, students are, because of this shift and focus to ensure they're able to do the work on their own without the device when appropriate, are also learning naturally that, oh, I better not do this on my phone with AI because I need to be ready in the classroom without that. And I think that's one of the benefits that we'll And I think that's one of the benefits that will come, even though we're going to be learning constantly and we're gonna have to continuously evolve and adjust.
Thank you.
All right, so um one of my colleagues spoke to, you know, being one of the school board members that had concerns and um I am uh one of those board members also that is cautious and I agree a lot with what my um colleague mentioned surrounding the data. I do have a couple of questions, though, um related to slide nine, guardrails at school and home. So when we're talking about what the school does, are we talking about um eliminating access during the school day, AI tools are turned off on school devices? Are we talking specifically about student devices?
Yes.
Okay, so a- and I, I appreciate that. I'm just curious, if we were gonna try to eliminate the possibility of unsupervised use on class assignments um in high school, and high school ends at 2:00 PM, why would we turn it off at 3:00 PM? Is there a reason that 3:00 PM was selected?
Yes, we try to take into consideration that there are schools that have after-school tutoring that access their computers and might still need assistance with teacher supervision.
Okay, all right, um, okay, um, is there any guardrails surrounding what types of keywords students are permitted to type in? Because we haven't really, you know, talked about that, that type of stuff, um any restrictions that on our end, we've kind of done um.
Yes, so Securily is going to continue to monitor based on a rubric that's been created, just as it did before, for um things that are typed into the chat. So Securily will monitor that, it will flag for inappropriate content or flag in the appropriate things, just as it does before, and it does that for all Chromebook usage. If there is a significant concern, we do have a way to access through a Google Vault with Department of Technology, um their entire process.
Okay. Um and in addition to, you know, the data questions that my colleague had, I was curious, what type of data or, or information are we going to collect to see if maybe the AI is being used a little too much um in the classrooms? How are we going to make sure that we're safeguarding against that?
Yes, I actually have some preliminary data that I'd be happy to share, just on the past um usage for students in the past, since November 5th. And that's something that my team tracks frequently and we look at and we monitor along with the applications that students are accessing, not just with AI. So in just the, again, since, in just November, since, since just November 5th, excuse me, um there's been, for, there's been five to nine active days for 1,800 students, two to four active days for 3,600 students. But overall, if you're looking at just in general, how many prompts a student is making? So if you take, for example, Google Gemini, the only thing they have access to, how many prompts are these kids putting into Gemini? There are 200 to 499 prompts, would be 69 students, 50 to 199 prompts is 1,079 students, 10 to 49 prompts is 3,500 students, and then one to nine prompts is 3,940 students. So you can see the majority of our students are prompting under 200 prompts since that start. So we are very pleased with those numbers.
Okay, um can I get you to email that to the board as well so that we have those? Because there's a lot of numbers, so I appreciate that. And I'm glad that we're able to have that level of um data available to continue to monitor, so I'm, I'm happy to hear that you have that. All right, thank you, I don't see any additional questions.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Weems, would you please read us into closed session?
I move the school board recess into closed session in accordance with the exceptions to open meetings law set forth in Code of Virginia 2.2-3711, Part A, Paragraph 7, 8, 12, as amended to deliberate on the following matters. Seven, consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such consultation or briefing at open meetings would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body. For the purpose of this subdivision, probable litigation means litigation that has been specifically threatened or on which the public body or its legal counsel has a reasonable basis to believe will be commenced by or against a known party. Nothing in this subdivision shall be construed to permit the closure of a meeting merely because an attorney representing the public body is in attendance or is consulted on the matter. Eight, consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel. Nothing in this subdivision shall be construed to permit the closure of a meeting merely because an attorney representing the public body is in attendance or is consulted on a matter. Twelve, information related to the negotiation and award of a specific contract where competition or bargaining is involved and where the release of such information would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body. Such information shall not be withheld after the public body has made a decision to award or not to award the contract. In the case of procurement transactions conducted pursuant to the Virginia Public Procurement Act, the provisions of this subdivision shall not apply and any release of information relating to such transactions shall be governed by the Virginia Public Procurement Act, namely to discuss A, unsolicited PPEA offer, B, status of pending litigation or administration cases, C, consultation with legal counsel regarding probable litigation and pending litigation matters.
Okay, motion made by Vice Chair Weems, seconded by Mr. Culpepper. Any discussion? Seeing none, I call for the vote to go into closed session.
Ms. Felton, how do you vote to go into closed? Thank you, Madam Chair, we have 11 ayes. The motion did pass to go into closed session.
Thank you.
Whereas the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach has convened a closed meeting on this day pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the School Board that such closed meetings was conducted in conformity with the Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which the certification applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion about which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered.
Okay, moved by Ms. Dwyer, seconded by Dr. Green. Any discussion? Seeing none, I call for the vote to certify closed session.
Mr. Callen, how do you vote?
Oh, sorry.
Thank you. Madam Chair, we have eleven ayes. The motion did pass for certification of closed session.
All right, thank you. It is 5:28 PM, and we will reconvene at 6 PM for a formal session, and we are adjourned.